We're gonna ask Councilwoman Harris, would she give us our prayer and Councilmember Crew my pledge of allegiance?
Lord, I come before you this evening, oh God, just wanna thank you, Lord, for all that you done, all that you doing, and all that you gonna do for West Memphis. I give you glory this evening, I give you honor, and I give you praise, cause you gave me a slam dunk, and I thank you, oh God, hallelujah! How you got rid of all the snakes, God? Some still wiggling, Lord, but you sucked them up too, and I give you glory this evening. Continue to bless this council, oh God, continue to lift it up, oh God, continue to look at our mayor, God, continue to give him the visions, oh God. Lord, we give you glory this evening, we give you honor, and we give you praise, oh God, cause it's in your name, oh God, that we live, we move, and have, I been. Thank you, Lord, for all the chiefs, all the fire department who help, oh God. Lord, I thank you for my brother Sudo, God. Lord, I just thank you for my big brother Willis, I thank you for the mayor, oh God. Glory to your name, Jesus, all the love that they show around me. I give you glory this evening, I give you honor, and I give you praise, oh God. So, Lord, you touch each and every one of them, oh God, cover them with your blood, lift them with your love, God, you bless their homes, oh God, bless their family, oh God, don't let them want for nothing, oh God. Lord, we thank you right now, God, we thank you right now, God. You look on our finance, oh God, continue to bless and stretch, oh God. In Jesus' name, I pray. I bless your name, oh God, I lift you up in this place, oh God, I lift you up in this city, oh God, I bless your holy name wherever I go, oh God. So, cover this city with your blood, oh God, lift it with your love, oh God, protect our families and our policemen, oh God, and, Lord, I give you all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen?
Amen.
Let's remain standing and face the flag, please, for the pledge.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor McClain?
Present.
City Attorney Steeps?
Here.
City Treasurer Suter?
Here.
Councilmember Bruce?
Here.
Councilmember Cat?
Here.
Councilmember Crew?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Hope?
Here.
Councilmember Hutchinson? Councilmember Hutchinson? Councilmember Mohammed?
Present.
Councilmember Monday?
Yeah.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Here.
Nine out of ten present, so we have a quorum.
Do we have any corrections to the minutes?
Make a motion, prove this submitted.
All in paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. We had no old business, uh, new business, Ms. Mohammed?
I'd like to make a motion that we read O R one and O one by title only.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? City Attorney?
R one is a resolution providing for the adoption of a budget for the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, for the twelve months, beginning January one, twenty twenty-three, and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, appropriating money for each item of expenditure therein, provided for, and for other purposes.
I get a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
End of discussion.
Mayor, just, you know, I don't know, I haven't attended all the budget meetings. I just wanted to make sure, just from my standpoint, you, Finance Director and City Treasurer, are comfortable with everything, it's probably the largest budget we've ever had.
Yes.
Been through it, I listened to what the council had to say, and I'm comfortable with it, but just, just wanted to hear an echo, I guess.
I'm the echo.
I'd like to further state that Ms. Tori and, um, did a wonderful job. I know she's very tired, it had to have been such a daunting task, but you did great. You too, Mr. Suter, I don't give you any credit, though, but he did a wonderful job, I just applaud you, and, uh, I was, I think I was at every session, and, uh, we went through everything with the fine, with the code. If I ask questions, it's only because I want answers, you know, knowledge is power.
Make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All in paper, aye? Do you want me to call the roll, or do you think I need to?
I can go ahead.
City Clerk, call the roll, please.
Uh, Councilmember Bruce?
Yes.
Councilmember Cat?
Yes.
Councilmember Crew?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutchinson? Councilmember Hutchinson? Councilmember Mohammed?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Yes.
We had nine out of ten on that, so they passed it. Will you get that resolution number, please?
Two-two-seven-six.
It's two-two-seven-six. City Attorney?
All right, O one is an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at fifteen-oh-nine County Road three-ten, permitting a sustainable aviation fuel production plant in an I, in a I-two heavy industrial zoning district.
May I afford to suspend the rules and places on the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at fifteen-oh-nine County Road three-ten, permitting a sustainable aviation fuel production plant in a I-two heavy industrial zoning district.
May I afford to suspend the rules and places on the third reading?
So moved.
All in paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at fifteen-oh-nine County Road three-ten, permitting a sustainable aviation fuel production plant in a I-two heavy industrial zoning district.
It's been read for a third time, can I get a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
End of discussion.
Yes, sir, will you explain to us what this, uh, induct, what this plant is?
Uh, I think Mr. Jim Smith was here. You want him with us?
I think he left.
He left?
He was injured.
Okay.
Cause I don't understand him.
Okay, Mr. Treasurer? Just excuse me, can you, yeah, can you go to the mic for the public?
Thank you.
This, this fuel station is at the West Memphis Airport. We got the money with the, with grants. Our fuel systems that we have there for the jets and the airplanes are so outdated, so antiquated, and half of it doesn't work. So, we received a grant, and, uh, their engineering company got together, designed one, and, uh, this is the one that they passed. It goes along with the apron that they're painting and everything right now, so. It's a great thing for West Memphis, it'll bring a lot more traffic in. Any questions?
Mr. Treasurer, did, did I understand that it's also, and you may have already said this, but it, it's also to furnish FedEx?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I didn't say that, but yeah, they're smaller aircraft, yeah, cause we can handle some big aircrafts.
Yeah. What was the amount of the grant?
I don't recall, I don't have the paperwork with me, I know it's an eighty percent grant.
Correct. You said eighty percent, then we, we gotta pay the?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're lucky on that, they usually don't go that high, but the way the economy and everything is right now, they're helping all the small municipal airports, trying to keep them alive.
So, they pay the eighty, we pay the twenty, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, eighty, twenty?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I really do appreciate this, because I, I served on the airport commission for many years, starting with Linda Avery, and then some with your wife, and I understand the need for this, cause we have a lot, a lot more aircrafts coming in than people really realize, a lot of private planes that are really secretive that are landing in there, and, of course, they have to be fueled up, so I think this is gonna be something very attractive.
It's gonna, it's gonna be real nice, the other one is probably about as old as I am.
May I ask a question, will this employ some new employees, with more employees, or?
Depends on how much more traffic it brings in.
Okay.
It, uh, it'll change what we're capable of.
That's good.
Yes, sir.
We, uh, we got the, uh, physical address, could you kinda give us a description of where that physical address is? Just asking.
Yeah, it's on Highway seventy, right at the city limits, which technically Broadway, and Airport Road is where this is, College Boulevard.
Okay.
If I may ask, Ms. Perry, um, this is at nine-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred, I couldn't remember exactly, so I borrowed somebody's budget.
This is, this property's, this property's out on, uh, Port Road out by the South Loop. Uh, Endaba is the company that's with ACBL, ACBL is leasing it to Endaba, which is the entity that's, uh, uh, gonna be in operating the Sustainable Aviation Fuel Production Plant, so that's where it's located.
Yeah.
It's a new address, because there was no address given to that property yet, uh, we had to provide a legal description showing where the drawings, actually Jim Smith, who was here earlier, provided a legal description, uh, and then also a drawing to show where the administrative offices were gonna be, so they could, uh, provide an address for the property. So, that's where it's gonna be located, and, uh, with regard to the airport, that's information that, that, uh...
What is that gonna, Mike, is it gonna be on, on the South Loop, or is it gonna be?
It's, it's actually, uh, to the west, I guess, so it's not really, it's Port Road, it's not the South Loop, it's to the, if my directions are correct, it's to the west, I'm, I'm directionally challenged sometimes.
Mike, is it south of the track, Riverway Track?
Uh... Um, yeah, I think so, yes, yes.
It's okay.
Yes. I haven't actually been out there, I'm just going based upon the map that I've seen.
Is there an existing facility already there?
No.
Okay.
They're gonna be building a facility, as I understand it, uh, and, like I said, Jim Smith was here, and, and he had all that information, but, but I've seen what he prepared.
Okay.
City Clerk, you call the roll?
Councilmember Bruce?
Yes.
Councilmember Cat?
Yes.
Councilmember Crew?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutchinson? Councilmember Hutchinson? Councilmember Mohammed?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Yes.
We got nine out of ten, so they passed it, so, Mr. Clerk, will you get that, ordinance a number?
That's gonna be, uh, two-six-one-six.
Two-six-one-six. All right. So, they passed it. Uh, we had no permission request, committee reports, we're gonna start with budget?
Well, first, first thing, we, we just approved our budget for twenty-twenty-three, and I feel like that, uh, that that's a good budget, and, um, I think the council, and under the leadership of Tori Perry, we did a good job of narrowing it down, and, uh, and getting it done prior to January the first, because, as I made the comment today, this is my second term as a city councilperson, and every time we come to the budget, we, we have to do an ordinance so that we can use a one-twelfth of the next month, so, anyhow, um, Tori, uh, also passed out the revenues for Southland Casino, and as you can see on that revenue, that one does go through December, and you can see that it, it's, uh, one-point-five million dollars over last year, I mean, yeah, um, and almost, it was four million dollars over the budget that we set, but I think our budget was a little bit low for that, but anyhow, that was that one. The A and P, uh, is through November, uh, was two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars, that's, that's one of the best months that we've had in A and P, and that could be, uh, due to the, uh, increase in the A and P tax. Moving over to the combined taxes for the city and the state, I mean, the county, uh, we collected in November a little over one million dollars, which was better than the last two years, and, uh, it, everything's, everything's looking real positive on those reports, and that, Mr. Mayor, concludes my report.
I did also wanna add, uh, have you all received your reports from the audit for this year?
Have not.
Okay, well, I know somehow I got it, but our audit has drastically improved since these two years that we went through learning and, and things have still, Frank was doing compared to Tori, but now that Tori has gotten it, besides, you know, we getting the new system, I'm hoping that you all, we get that done, you can see it's a drastic, a drastic change, and I just wanna commend her and our City Treasurer for the outstanding job in making sure that, um, we get that audit we need to be in, I'm, I'm proud to stand on that, that we did a great job with this audit this year, so promote it and talk about it and tell how good it is this year. Police?
Police, excuse me, Police Commission Meeting, Monday, December the fifth, at twelve, meeting was called to order at twelve-twenty PM, and the topics of discussion, seventy-two out of eighty positions filled, with two entering the academy's next class. We're spending more time working traffic violations and being visible in the community, speeding and illegal, illegal parking seems to be more in numbers, this has made a great difference. Mayor McClain applauded the department on receiving a one-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for purchasing of body cameras, ride gear, and radios. Chief Presti stated that we have the best investigative division anywhere, and that we, he would put them up against anyone. There were several expressions of appreciation for the awesome job that our police department is doing, end of report.
Thank you. Yes, sir, utility.
Utility Commission met on December the eighth, at eight-thirty AM. The first item on their agenda was approval of November tenth, twenty-twenty-two minutes, minutes were approved as written. The second item on their agenda was November safety report, there were zero recordable and zero lost time accidents for the month of November. West Memphis Utility has one-hundred-and-eighty-six days without lost time injury, and one-hundred-seventy-five days without a recordable. The third item on their agenda was personnel update, there were no new hires, and one involuntary resignation for the month of November. The utility currently has eleven open positions out of seventy-nine budgeted positions. The fourth item on their agenda was to approve the purchase of a roll-off truck. General Manager Todd Peterson stated that the truck would be for wastewater treatment plant. The purpose of the purchase of the roll-off truck from River City Hydras was approved, motion passed unanimously. The next item on the gen, on the agenda, General Manager Todd Peterson informed commissioners that West Memphis Utility Commission was selective, received two grants. The water department, one of one-hundred-and-five, about a four-hundred-and-ninety-two applicants to receive a grant. They received a grant of two-million-eight-hundred-fifty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars to replace all water meters in the city. The wastewater department was one of fifty-two out of three-hundred-and-ninety applicants to receive a grant. They received a grant for five million dollars to assist in the cost of upgrading wastewater treatment plant. The last item on their agenda was to adjourn motion passed unanimously, end of report.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Murray, uh, Public Works?
Yes, sir, the Public Works, um, Department met on Tuesday, December sixth. Number one, a claim was settled with Ms. Darla Freeman, whose car hit an open manhole on October fifth, twenty-twenty-two, and we told her at our prior meeting that we would have to discuss with City Attorney whether or not this is something that we could do since, uh, this entire state of Arkansas has it toward immunity, so it was done, everything was taken care of. Reverend Arthur Jackson asked the committee to approve the purchasing of dog repellent deterrent, um, for the Public Works Department, including sanitation and street. The committee approved that unanimously, and that's in lieu of dogs chasing the trucks, and dogs smiling, and, and injuring someone here in the city of West Memphis recently, so we did say, yes, they can get that to be on every truck, not only on every truck, but the men that are out picking up the trash and things of that nature, they need that protection, so we did approve that, and I think he's gotten with Kenneth Johnson, purchasing agent, to go ahead and get that done. Our fleet report, front-end loaders are all operational, rear-end loaders, one-armed bandit and grapple truck are all operational. Total recycling for the month, eight-thousand-three-hundred pounds, total tires down to one-thousand-twenty-four. There was no city, city engineer's report, but we're going to be talking to someone, Mayor McClain, if we can get, uh, someone to come and give us a city engineer's report, well, I, I probably won't be on that committee next year, but, uh, someone needs to give a report on the bridges and things, updates, all of those, all of those kinds of things for the public information. Code enforcement report, I have all of this for you, Patricia, the code enforcement report is very stunning. Officer George Phillips has continued to assist the clerk's office since November eighteen, twenty-twenty-two, through December sixth, twenty-twenty-two, with collections of delinquent advertising and promotion money, as well as a notification and collections of outstanding privileged license renewal for the year twenty-twenty-two. The clerk's office sent out notifications to all businesses that had not yet renewed their business license for twenty-twenty-two. However, the response was not advan, advantageous, since it is important that we collect the funds before, uh, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, to avoid having the businesses purged from the system and continuing to operate without proper license also. Licenses also, the money's generated revenue for the general funds account and advertising and promotion. Officer Phillips has conducted thirty-four site visits, and as a result, we have been able to collect the following amounts. Privileged license, I think that's two-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars from eleven-eighteen through December sixth, twenty-twenty-two, and also delinquent A and P taxes with penalty eighty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-seventeen dollars and twenty-three cent, and delinquent, delinquent A and P taxes were received, received from Pax, Hasty Chicken, we have that here? Where is that? I never heard of it.
Uh, Hasty took over Payoff Seed, Complel.
Oh, okay.
They, 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 oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They were closed for a while.
Right, yeah, yeah. Well, hooray. As a result of Mr. Phillips' visit to the two locations, where we determined that the new owners had failed to submit A and P taxes to the city of West Memphis, so we want to give a shout-out to you, Ms. Lane, and of course, to Officer Phillips, for doing such a fantastic job, and we appreciate him very much, and I have all of this, and also a copy of that police report from Ms. Dollar, and I'll submit this to your office. Uh, that is my report.
Thank you. Did I overlook any other committees who have, that have met, here and on? Um, I had no appointments, uh, no presentations by the mayor, I did wanna bring up a few things, uh, firstly, I want, uh, and Councilmember Murray had pretty much talked about both of these, the, uh, West Memphis Police Department did receive a hundred-thousand-dollar grant, and they's gonna use that on body cameras and ride gear, and whatever, something?
Radio.
Radio, so, with that being said, you know, we had already allocated, what, about eighty-thousand last year?
I believe so.
Yeah, so that gonna be eighty-thousand dollars, this council, I guess you all can decide wherever that money need to go to, because, do grants once again, um, that is how it can go.
What is it again, Mr. Mayor, radios and what else?
Ride gear and...
Ride gear?
Yes, ma'am. Riot.
Oh, riot, like, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ride gear, cameras, and, what else was it? Cameras, radios.
Also, um, uh, Utility Department received total of a seven-point-eight million dollar grant, which, uh, two-point-eight-five million is gonna go toward the, uh, water, and the other five million is gonna go toward wastewater, so that's good for the city, definitely, uh, so I really commend Todd and his whole team over there for getting that as well, as well as, um, uh, Dewayne Rose has wrote a four-hundred-thousand grants for the eight-win, we have not yet received word, don't, word on that yet, but we hoping that everything comes to, and we receive that to go toward our eight-win system, so that's something definitely, and I'm proud about. I did wanna go something real quick, and I had to do it last year, and I'll do it this year, um, I talked to the municipal league, and they, they advised me in the municipal league, you know, like, if I'm giving something, I'm gonna add it to my final disclosure, I just want the council to know, I'd like the re, the minister to reflect that, uh, if I'm giving tickets to a basketball game, that I just want everyone to know, we not doing any business currently with, with the company who's giving it to me, so I'm just, for the municipal league and for, I guess someone made it public to them that they felt I, they need to know this, so I'm just making it clear that they know that I'm doing it, so the council know, and they gave me, you know, tickets, and like I said, currently, we do not have no business arrangement with them, so it's nothing influencing me, you know, saying, well, these to influence me to make a decision, so we're not doing that, so I just wanted to let everyone know, that I am getting the tickets for their game, well, not the ticket, actually going into a suite, so that's what it is, not tickets, it's a, a suite that they have to go, uh, look, look at a basketball game.
And also, while we're on grants, I would like to commend, uh, Chief Barry Ely, this may be my last ti, month with you, but I want to, uh, commend him and his staff, I know you have a grant out there, I don't know how it's looking right now, but I'm thinking that it's promising, so that should be more money, is that we should save, we can get how many employees, you said?
Nine firefighters.
Nine firefighters? Yeah, the safety plan.
Get, uh, Phil Howes, bring, the, 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 firefighters, or more, just after thirty-six months, the city council, we're gonna, we're gonna have, have, have more firefighters, thirty-six months, three days, but, get out.
So, we're hoping and praying that you, that you, that the city of West Memphis will get that, and that's gonna hire more people and everything, and I, I, thank you so much.
And twenty...
May I say something, Mayor? Chief Ely, would you please, uh, tell us about what happened at Wonder, uh, Junior High, and what, you know, what went on, and how?
Chief, chief, will you come to the mic, so that, uh...
Thank you, thank you. Yes, I just kinda got an update on it, uh, my fire marshal, they were on the scene with her inspector, and I'm gonna let her tell you exactly what happened, uh, because she was actually on the scene. Will you kinda explain what happened at Wonder?
Trade-offs ago, he was there, actually, in the, in the thick of things.
Uh, good evening, so, the, uh, incident that happened at Wonder yesterday morning, uh, was, thank goodness, uh, not really an emergency that developed, uh, it appears to be a dust explosion in the HVAC system, which is usually normally just a quick flash, and then goes out, you probably experienced that at some point in your home, when you've turned on your furnace for the first time in the year, and you have that bad smell of smoke for just a moment, of course, it's a little bit scarier when school's in session, and it's, and it involves the children, but, uh, there was no active fire, there was no active smoke in the building, the children were safe, and, uh, the crews on C did a fantastic job, uh, if you were there, they were crawling over the building like ants, we had them on the roof, inside, and chasing all the HVAC, uh, uh, system to make sure it was okay, and it, and it was, so the students didn't have to be evacuated, it was raining out, we kept them inside and safe, and, uh, the incident was handled appropriately, I think we cleared it in, what, about thirty minutes, total? So, it was really a, a quick operation, yeah.
Yeah, and, and again, just for clarity, we did not close the school, uh, the superintendent and assistant superintendent made their call, uh, they just deemed the smell in the building was completely unsafe, for those children to be inhaling that type of odor, so, uh, they made their call, we did not close the school, the, uh, superintendents of Board Education decided to do that. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
There's a couple more, uh, this year, this administration is definitely gonna focus on... This year, this administration is definitely gonna focus on getting all the grants that we can get, actually looking at hiring, bringing someone in, possibly to help assist with a current grant right now, you know, whatever we need. I, I understand. I, I get what, what Councilman Kelly and what Ms. Perry always say, better spend they money than to spend our own. So definitely, we gonna get more grants, we gonna go after more grants. Some we may not get, but some we'll get. And then my last thing is, I never had an opportunity to talk to the people of this council, and I, and I really want to say this and be through with it. I'm truly humbled and thankful that the people of West Memphis for re-elected me to a second term. I want them to know I don't take this opportunity lightly. As I walk through our city, I listen to our citizens, their concerns, and elaborate on our city's bright future. The vision that God has given me for our city is that of hope, progress, and unity. It has not always been easy. But I say no weapon formed against me shall prosper. Long as God be for me, it's more than the world against me, and God prepare the table in the presence of my enemies. In this election, the people of West Memphis spoke with over a sixty-four percent mandate that they believe in West Memphis' team winning streak. I again want to extend the honor branch to the members of the city council. I understand that it takes all of us working together to accomplish the desires of the people. I'm committed to working with you and listening to you to help make West Memphis a better city. So twenty twenty-three would be a great year of prosperity for our city. The favor of God will cover West Memphis, so will our ambitions and dreams. Let's finish our assignment that has been laid out for our city and see it through its manifestation. God bless you and thank you.
Amen.
One little thing I want to say, Mr. James Pulliam, this is his last time, so we bid you adieu.
And a blessing.
And I want to thank you for being a very longtime friend and the wonderful job you've done politically. And I know we all have, we have, we all have oppositions, we all have differences, but that's the beauty of everybody being different. I think when God put us in a cluster, he doesn't want all of us to be in the same box. We all have different thoughts, different minds, and that's what makes everything so beautiful. So Mr. Pulliam, I just want to say thank you so much. I'm gonna miss you sitting here beside me. I mean that in a professional manner. And, and I, I think we're supposed to give you some kind of a plaque. I know the mayor, I don't know that, I don't know your mind. But I just want to let you know how much I have appreciated you and all of the knowledge that you have afforded the city of West Memphis over all of the number of years that you have. How many years has it been? About twenty-five, thirty? Three years? No, I mean, city council and everything.
Ms. Muhammad, I, I also want to add, I do want to thank you too, Mr. Pulliam. You know, just for, personally from me, I mean, even besides this, this mail race, you always been there for me. You even let me work for you when I needed to. I just want to let you know, I appreciate that from you. So I wish you well in the future, but thank you so much.
When my brother passed away, there was a lot, of course, I just want to say this little testimony. There was, there's always confusion, I guess, in every family. But once he was lying there, I said to myself, what was the use? What was the use in all the fighting, bickering, name-calling? Because we will all end here. And I said to myself, what was the use? What good did it do anybody? This is the end of it. So from that, I said, we just have to love each other and accept our differences, accept our disagreements, accept everything. God is not in the box. I'm Muslim. Most people in here are Christians. I was Christian all of my life. I know that there's only one God who is worthy of worship. We all serve the same God. He is not in anybody's box. We are not in anybody's box. So we just, if we're good enough for God to love, then we should be good enough for each other to love. And that's how I see it. That's my spiel.
And Ms. Patricia Lane, I want to thank you so much for everything you've done and everything you've shown. I pray all my blessings upon you. It's a blessing to have you upon you.
Oh, that's so sweet.
I know for a lot of us, and I've served James for a long, long time, and it's not losing a brother, and that's what you are. We won't be together as much, but hopefully our paths will still cross many times, and I just truly appreciate the relationship we've had all these years.
And don't think he and I haven't had disagreements. We've had falling outs, too. Believe it, believe it.
He won't be here all the time.
Thank you, James, for being a brother to me.
Appreciate you, James.
Have you right there.
Since, excuse me, since everyone is having their say. Let me explain something to everyone sitting here. I'm the type of person, I'm like this, regardless. And I've been trained throughout my whole life this way. And I tell people a lot of times, I'm the way that I am because of how God has blessed me. Think about it. Ever since I was at the age of seventeen years of age, God has always taken care of me, even before then. And my thing is, in this community, ever since I come back, returned from my little, I deal with the military, I've always believed in service. Even before I got on the city council, I've always served West Memphis. I will continue to serve West Memphis. It's not like I'm going away. You can take that to the bank. My thing is, I love what I do, and it's a ministry to me. And like I tell anyone out there, you call me, it's one thing I'm gonna do. I'm gonna give you information if that's what you need, and I'm, I'm here, whether it's the mayor or whoever. Whatever I can do, I'm still gonna do it. That's just me, I'm built like that. As they say, Ford tough. So my point is, just because, and if the ones that sit in here that know me, any differences that we have, let me tell you something. When I walk out the door and come back, I'm a whole new person. So God knows, that's me. And I just appreciate all the citizens that have supported me over these years and everybody that's sitting here. Yes, if we all, if we never had any differences, guess what? You never learn anything. Think about it. And so I'm here, I'm gonna continue to be here. It's not like I'm going away. I'm not gonna say I won't be traveling, but I'm not gonna be going away for good. So, but I appreciate everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, you, you're quick on that one, actually. Can I get a motion and second to adjourn?
Sure.
Affirmative?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.